Good evening, everyone. The hour is 5:31 and 19 seconds. And we will begin, and I'll call us all to order. And Commissioner Atkins, would you mind leading us in a moment of prayer?
Let us pray. Most gracious and almighty, we thank you again for such a lovely day. And we thank you again for the opportunity to come together and to do the work of our city government. And we ask that you would continue to bless all of those present and all of those who are still on their way. And I especially ask that you will lead and guide us to do the work tonight, and that the work we do tonight will be pleasing in your sight. In his name I pray and ask it all. Amen.
Amen. Tonight, we will be led in pledge of allegiance by Boy Scout Max Germin. Mr. Germin, come right up. Do your thing.
...........................................................................
Thank you, sir. Now, before you run off, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Well, my name is Max Germin, and I've lived here since I was three. And I'm in Troop 326, which is at the First Christian Church. And I'm almost to first, no, second class.
Excellent. Now, I have a question. How'd you become so soft-spoken when you... Out of your father's...
Take the fifth amendment.
That's right. That's right. Do we have a little something for him? There you go.
Tell me, take the fifth amendment.
You plead silent.
Plead silence, that's right.
There you go. Thank you, Max. Logan, you outdid yourself. Commission, you have had since Friday tonight's agenda. I assume it meets your approval. Otherwise, we are in the section called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to speak on items that are on the agenda. And you feel free to take the podium. I will strictly enforce a three-minute rule, so feel free if anybody wants to do so. Going once, going twice, moving right along. Tonight, we have the bittersweet pleasure, I guess, of recognizing Police Officer Sally Bussel and her retirement.
Mayor, she's not here yet. She's on her way.
So we'll move that on.
She'll be here in just a minute.
Yes, yeah. She'll get here when she wants to.
She'll be here in just a minute. They're on their way.
All right. Mr. Coffey, I'm gonna turn the floor to you, please, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. We don't always have an opportunity to do this, but with the water plant's recent laboratory certification, I decided it was a good chance to introduce again Andy and now also bring back Mike Galloway with the wastewater treatment plant. They can come to the microphone if y'all want to harass them. I'm sure they would love to do that. But the... These guys have put forth a tremendous amount of effort. The water plant, Andy's been working on the certification there for over a year. Mike worked probably for 18 months by the time he was doing some background work to get his laboratory certified. He, through construction, Andy was a little bit slower in getting started, but they're about a year apart, but we want to acknowledge their effort. Mike is certified to do, at the wastewater plant, pH, nitrogen, suspended solids, BOD, phosphorus, all these kinds of technical things that require a tremendous amount of SOPs and quality control, quality assurances, that the state agencies and the EPA look over their shoulder at. Andy is the same way. We are microbiologically certified at the water plant now, which is handy. For example, if you have a boil water advisory, we can lift that through the wastewater, through the water plant sampling now, rather than having to ship that off. So on the weekends, we can get back in off that boil water advisory quicker. So I want to thank these guys publicly and describe their effort and acknowledge their effort as good leaders, and without them, certainly, our ability to do work that you guys have asked us to do would go down. And so I appreciate them a lot personally.
Gentlemen, stand up. Give 'em a round. Sometimes it's out of sight, out of mind, but every time we turn on a faucet, those guys got something to do with it. Appreciate everything you do. Absolutely.
It was a few years ago, we had the ice storm. That was really, talk about some guys who buckled down and got it done. They were... It was pretty amazing that it wasn't a lot worse than it was because of those guys. Appreciate it.
We appreciate what you do, and you won't hurt our feelings if you decide to go do something else this evening.
You're at my...
It's quite all right. We understand. Anything else there, Mr. Coffey?
No, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Okay. Let's back up to item one. This would be the recognition of Police Officer Sally Bussel. Chief Gray, I'm gonna let you take the lead, sir. Playing close already.
I don't blame her.
This is a lot more comfortable.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, all attendees. Officer Sally Bussel, she came to Danville, back before she came to the Danville Police Department, I should say. She was a military policewoman for five years. She was an officer in Lancaster for about two and a half years before she came to Danville in the late fall, around November of 1998. Sally was hired as the Housing Authority Officer at that time under a federal grant, and after that grant expired, she was transitioned to the Danville Police Department. It was really just a... She was already at Danville Police Department, just that position was funded through the Housing Authority at the time. From November of 1998, somewhere about that time, to January 2019, Sally has had a full career here at the Danville Police Department. She's been a patrol training officer. She's a bike patrol officer. She was a K-9 handler for a couple of years. She's also a RAD instructor, which is a program that teaches women self-defense tactics to help defend themselves in the case of a sexual assault or an attack. Sally's had a... Those are just some of the things that she's got certificates in training and expertise in, but Sally's had a long, full 20-career, and it's been a standpost, foundation part of the Danville Police Department during some of our rocky times. You know, we've not had very many people retire from this department in the last couple of years with more than 20 years of service, and Sally's one of those people that has done that. Just thinking about her career kind of reminded me of an incident that it actually happened... Tomorrow will be the three-year anniversary, but we had a barricaded suspect out on Boone Trail. Remember?
It was cold.
It was very cold. It was about 26 degrees. We had a foot of snow on the ground, and Sally was one of the first officers on scene that night, and had to stand post outside for about four and a half hours. And during that encounter, the suspect came out and pointed and decocked the weapon at those officers several times during that four-and-a-half-hour encounter. We were able to enter that house and take that suspect into custody without any injury to himself and to any Danville Police Officers. I just, I guess I really wanted to bring that up because it's just what kind of Officer Sally's been. You know, she's been dedicated to not just our community, but to Lancaster, but to this country, you know, for an extended period of time. And she's put herself second to the service of many citizens, not just the citizens of Danville, but also in the service to this country. She's been a very dedicated and supportive of the Danville Police Department. She's been a great asset in certifications and things that she's done. And all those things, if you look at those things that she's done, the PTO Training Officer, that's training young officers. You know, the K-9 and some of that stuff, you know, is written in our community of drugs. RAD training is helping young women...
Empower women.
Empower women, see? Correct myself. But everything that she's done, you know, it's been to help benefit others. And today, I would just like to wish Sally a very fun and enjoyable retirement. And just want to say that I truly appreciate not just her service, but her friendship and support in my tenure here, and we will miss her, and this community will miss her. And I just want to say thanks.
You want me to give it? You want to give it?
Go ahead.
I was gonna say officer, but you're not officer anymore, are you?
Just a regular person now, sir.
There you go. And you don't have to go serve with that either. That little box can never express our appreciation. It'll never fully let us understand all that you have done in your career and all that you have done for this community. That said, tell us what you're going to do in your spare time.
I have a lot of projects at home that I'm working on, so there's plenty to do there.
Plenty to do. Well, we wish you health, happiness. Our doors open. Should you have a need to come back and visit, we'd be glad to have you. And thank you for all you have done.
Thank you.
Okay.
We'll have cake, boys. Take a punch.
Fair warning, if you're gonna get cake, you might want to go do that now, because there's a lot of people out there with black on. And they hit that pretty hard. And that was nice. That was nice. I did not know she'd done all the military work.
She's old 95 Bravo lady. How about that?
Item three is the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve as presented?
So move the minutes of the February 11th, 200...
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Take your time.
I'll second it.
A second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Good. Go ahead.
I'd like to make an addition if I could, and so it'd be an amendment to it. I think that sometimes you just make simple mistakes, but I think we forgot to include Commissioner Terry on being present last meeting, so if we could do that, I'm good to go.
With that small detail, Mr. Atkins, you willing to amend your motion?
Yes, sir. And I also want to call to your attention the time for adjournment, Mr. Mayor.
Which was?
It was brief.
5:35.
Well, y'all didn't do anything. I mean, look at this. There's nothing there.
That's not what the public said.
There's no other discussion? Call a question on favor of the motion. Say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item four is another one of those really, really nice things that we all get to do and I get to do. Mr. Albright, front and center, sir.
That's his daddy, Mr. Albright.
Yeah. Remember when you were born. This is for service truly above and beyond the call of duty. Allow me to read this. This is a proclamation recognizing Coell Stone and Mr. Clay Albright. Whereas the Danville Fire Department responds to calls to remove road hazards from the roadways, specifically oil or oil substance spills. And whereas one of the most common ways to mitigate this hazard is to spread rock dust onto the spill to absorb the oil and to use a road broom to sweep up the dust clearing the road of the oil. And whereas on January 25th, 2019, the Danville Fire Department responded to a call of an oil spill on Parable Road in the bypass in which the affected lanes were very slick and had to be shut down. And whereas Clay Albright and Coell Stone were called to assist and did so immediately with crushed rock and a road broom to clean up the oil. And whereas these mitigation efforts that were provided come at a significant cost, a cost that is usually absorbed by the transportation company responsible for the spill. And whereas the responsible company could not be identified, Mr. Clay Albright and Coell Stone absorbed the cost of the services provided as he and the company just wanted to be, quote, "good neighbors," close quote, to the city of Danville. Now therefore, be it resolved that Mayor G. Michael Paris and the City Commissioners of the city of Danville, on this 25th day of February, hereby recognize Clay Albright and Coell Stone for their dedication to the community and constant willingness to be of service to the first responders. Thank you, sir. No, he's gonna sit there.
Mayor, could I add something while you're getting back to the stand, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Let me say this. I don't tell Clay this very often, but it is important that we understand as a community what makes the community work. And when we have an emergency, the very first person to call me and say, "Hey, I've got equipment out here if you need it," is him. He calls me every single time. And for example, the ice storm, for example, you know, the debris was on their property, if I remember correctly, it was where we had the burn pile. The winter snows, countless snows, his equipment has been mobilized to remove snow. I remember unsolicited, a tractor-trailer being stuck at the intersection of 150 and Parable Road where his equipment removed that tractor and trailer. They do a lot of work for the community. It's community mindedness, and I want him to tell him personally that I appreciate that publicly and that he has made the community better with their effort. And I want to let the commission know that as well.
Thank you, Earl. Again, thank you, Clay.
We don't usually just let him get a proclamation to go sit down, do we? I mean, he should be...
Well, I'll tell you what.
I never have to do another one, so how about... I've done like five or six in the last seven years.
It can be a little expensive, isn't it?
No, it's just a whole lot of fun, and I like to get out. It's fun, but I don't want to mess anything else up, so.
Again, thank you.
So before you move on, I'll move to approve that proclamation.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to make sure we give credit to Clay's upbringing and his training, but there's a lady out there... Well, no, I'm talking about Mom. Mom was the guiding force behind you and I both, right? So, okay, let's give credit where credit is due. All right.
No further discussion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries. Item five is the Sister Cities Commission presentation. Dr. Regelman.
I'm not here to urge the city and the county to merge, although 10, 15 years? Think about it. It's not a bad idea. But to make a little presentation, we had a really... We've come off a really good year. We had a play at Sister City Play at Pioneer Playhouse, a women's soccer team, went to Ireland. We had the group doing the arts camp, when we brought an artist over, did a mural. And we held a state meeting at 35 folks from Earl, Kentucky and Danville for a day. What's coming up? Well, on St. Patrick's Day, which is Sunday, 17th of March, is a really great young Irish... Four brothers, well, two brothers and two brothers, four people playing traditional Irish music at the Norton Center. And if you're a Sister Cities sponsor, you can get really great prices and get to meet them and maybe have a party. How do you become a sponsor? I think some of you have already become, but there are some ways here for only 50 bucks. This is to present the city, though, a couple of things. One, the Irish artist gave us from Kirk Ferguson, this is a plaque with the mural. And the other is something that we put together, which is a Shutterfly book. Nick took the pictures, but it's really, it's incredibly good. It has, it shows the incredible diversity, and a whole lot of people helped make that mural. And we want to present it to the city. And thank you for your continuing support of Sister Cities. It makes us a little different than any other small town in Kentucky.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very kind.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. If anyone had just...
There you go. You're all looking at it.
He didn't ask for any money, neither did he.
Thank you, Milton. Item six is the Certified Local Government Annual Report, going to be led by Ms. Joni House. Good evening.
Good evening. How are y'all doing this evening?
We're good.
It looks like I am the next three up to bat this evening, so...
You on a chair?
No. I hope I'm not appearing that long-winded. We presented our Certified Local Government Annual Report, which we do the Kentucky Heritage Council once a year. That is when we report back to the Heritage Council that Danville is doing everything it is supposed to do to be in compliance with the Certified Local Government Agreement and ordinance that we have. This year, we had a couple of really good things, I think, that helped us move forward professionally. One of the ones is that the folks on the Architectural Heritage Board were foresighted enough to think that we needed a better way to move the approvals through. So they began a staff approval. So now I can approve specific things with the COAs, specifically signs and things of that nature. We did that so that business community would have a little easier go with DAHB. That's worked out tremendously well, I think, so that's been a pretty win-win for us. We did 28 COAs that were approved. Two were denied, and one was denied and then overturned by the city commission. There's been no revisions or update to the design guidelines. We did have two district additions, the Willis Russell Memorial House located on Walnut Street and that wonderful Montgomery Rhodes House located on South Third. They were designated as standalone historic landmarks and were admitted into the historic district overlay in August of 2018. So we have therefore expanded our historic district, which is one of our charges and is a tremendous benefit to Danville. We also have a national register nomination that is finally working its way through the Department of the Interior. We probably would have had that by now had the federal government not closed down for some time. But now it's working its way through, and I believe that that will be completed in the next 30 days, and that will become a national registered district. It is a really cool place. If you have not been over there to look at how that actually comes into the city, you can pretty much tell that was from Danville from the very old days, a very narrow street, all of those structures really hearken back to the day of when African-American folks moved in there and did that. So if you get a chance, go look at it and really give it an eyeball. The old hemp manufacturing plant is super cool. I can't tell you, that's probably the oldest one on the street, somewhere around 1840. Awesome. So have a look at that. We do have one small issue that we addressed with our Architectural Heritage Board. We have some of the members that are not doing their training, and we somewhat scolded them about that and asked them to get that training done. We have to do that to be in compliance with the ordinance. So they got their prompt chastising by my boss at the meeting, and she did a fine job with that. We will continue to provide training for those folks here locally, and I'll talk a little bit about some of the upcoming things that we'll have to do to help them along with that. I think probably one of the best things that we've done this year is get out and meet the business owners within the community and those who are trying to get COAs and work on the buildings. I've met with several local business owners. I've been doing that today, so I'm a little grubby. Old buildings are a bit dirty, and my hair probably looks like Hattie the Witch because the wind's been quite a bit. But I was able to go out and meet with folks and try to really work on what they were trying to do with their buildings, if they had any issues, if they had any questions. And we've gotten a lot of good feedback with that. So I think we're doing a good job in helping the business community and local homeowners here within the historic district overlay really get the best benefit of what I can do for them. So I think all in all, we've done a pretty good job with that. That was sent off in the very first of February, so we are in compliance with our ordinance. And I'm hoping you all each have a copy of that report, and if you have any questions about it, I'll be happy to answer that for you now.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions?
I was gonna say, it was a good report. It was good reading to see all those things that better accomplished. I guess the only thing I was most concerned about is that we need to fill some vacancies.
Well, it is my understanding that a couple of them have been reappointed on that board. I have, I've got to get with Bridget. I'm not sure that the city has completed the paperwork for that yet for our appointees. Yeah, we'll fix it, so. But you know, that warns everyone, especially the mayor, to look at and make sure that we've got all the people where we're supposed to have them and up to date, so.
Okay.
All right. So next?
Next.
All right. We have here another grant proposal that I've worked up, which is part of our Certified Local Government. The Kentucky Heritage Council provides that grant to us, or grant opportunity to us once a year. And with some discussion with our DAHB members, we decided that it would be a good idea if we got some better training and assistance with the public art that's going on within the community. So what I proposed to do, after talking with some of my colleagues around the state, it seems that Cincinnati, Ohio has a wonderful program through artworks, and it would be my proposal to take DAHB members and city commission members up there for a tour that day, the first day of it, have a look at what they do within their city, talk to all the different entities that work to get that done. And then so you all can actually see how that's integrated within the city, how that's working, and just get some good feedback and brainstorming. Because I think exposure is a fine thing. It helps us see what other folks are doing. As I said and said before, we're not the only people in the state, and certainly not the country, that are dealing with the public art coming into the historic districts. So that will give you a good idea of how they handle it. I've heard really great things about that program, and it's a little larger than what we are here, but still probably would benefit us all. And then the second day, I would like to propose a morning session with some workshops for both the city commission and Architectural Heritage Board, maybe invite folks from Shelbyville and some of the surrounding areas that also are dealing with this, and just have a good brainstorming session and maybe some suggestions of how they handle it and what their procedures are. And then that afternoon, just a public session where we can get in and get folks ideas about how they want to do this and how we move forward in the future. And to do that, we're going to need about $3,520. A great deal of that will be the federal match, which is right around $2,100. And the remaining of that, $600, will be for my staff time, which we can claim as in con, but there would have to be around $500 cash outlay for the city because we would need meals and transportation and things of that nature. So it comes out to the grand total of $3,520. The city's part of that, I believe, is going to be...
$2,112.
You got it. So, and we would need a proclamation on that, or gentleman, to pass that through.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201902-2501 as presented.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. I stand corrected, it wasn't $2,112, it's $1,408. Thank you. Sorry.
That's our...
And with that correction, any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye. And the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And this is not on our agenda this evening, but I wanted to bring up to you all with our last grant that was approved. We are planning a series of workshops on March 30th, April 13th, and May 11th. We will start to publicize that here very soon. The first workshop will be an...
Seeing none, all in favor of the resolution, say aye, and the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And this is not on our agenda this evening, but I wanted to bring up to you all with our last grant that was approved. We are planning a series of workshops on March thirtieth, April thirteenth, and May eleventh. We will start to publicize that here very soon. The first workshop will be an open forum of how the district is assembled, what all the rules and regulations are, how the business owners can interact with that, and just some general information to help folks understand the processes within the district. The second one will be on the National Register nomination. And then the third, we're going to have an active window repair shop to show folks how they can fix their own windows. So that's what we did with the last grant, and that's upcoming. So I wanted to bring that up to everybody, and hopefully everyone will come.
Thank you.
Do you have three dates?
The three dates are March thirtieth, April thirteenth, and May eleventh. And that will also help us with some of our training issues that we have with DAHB. Those will qualify as training sessions as well. So that's that.
Thank you, ma'am. Tell us about the National Register nomination.
Well, the National Register nomination has been provided for the Willis-Russell Memorial Cabin. It was approved by the Danville Architectural Heritage Board at our last meeting last week. That particular cabin is nominated under Criterion C of the National Register, which means that it has a method of construction that is worth preserving in the community. I thought the National Register nomination was done very well. It certainly is well worth the preservation within the community. And what we will need from you folks is also your approval to get that back to the Heritage Council so that process can move forward. Then it will go to the State Board, they'll hear it, and then it'll go to the national parks for the completion, if they don't shut down again, so we make sure to get that through in a timely manner. But I think that the Willis-Russell House really does embody Danville's history from the very beginning of the age, and those log structures are few and far between now, gentlemen, so it is well worth the conservation and preservation of it.
Do I hear a motion that we, I guess, endorse?
Yes, sir.
The National Register nomination.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner Cottles, or a second?
Second.
Commissioner Atkins, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, ma'am. Item nine is Resolution 2019-02-25-02. This is the Healthy Foods Through Innovation Grant application request. Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir. Very briefly, staff is recommending your consideration and approval of this resolution to apply for a grant through the National Recreation Parks Association Walmart Foundation Grant to increase access to healthy foods. The grant, if received, would be in the amount of thirty-to-thirty-five thousand dollars. Does not require local match, but the city would provide in-kind labor. The grant is thought a good idea because it would provide a space in Jackson Park through the construction of a pavilion to hold an additional farmer's market to serve neighborhood folks and people in the city. You might recall at one time in the not-too-distant past, we did have a pavilion out there, but due to its deteriorated condition, we did take that down, I think maybe in 2009 or ten, somewhere along, or eleven or twelve, rather, somewhere along in that line. This would give us an opportunity to construct another home that would improve both economic development opportunities for farmers, as well as an additional source for people to go and receive food, fresh food that they could purchase.
Thank you, sir. Do you hear a motion on the resolution?
I move for approval of Resolution Number 2019-02-25-02.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, sir. Discussion?
Yeah, I have some reservations here without input from the farmer's market folks. They've put a lot of energy into trying to have the farmer's market downtown, and I think Jackson Park would not be where they want to be, but I'd like to hear from them. I should have started by saying I appreciate you looking out for us for the grants, and I just would not feel comfortable working with this one on Jackson Park without their input.
If I might reply to that comment, which I think is a very good comment, we became aware of this grant only towards the middle or latter part, maybe Thursday of last week. The deadline for applying is very soon. Again, it would not necessarily replace the one downtown. It's for a different socioeconomic group, possibly, in terms of shopping there. But before we proceeded with the actual construction, if we get the grant, maybe those conversations could occur. If we don't apply, we won't have that opportunity to even ask those questions.
Sure.
And could it not also be used for other things?
Certainly, it could, potentially. You know, I'm not sure what other types of parks and recreation events, but certainly if you've got a pavilion there that's not being fully utilized all the time, it could.
Sure. I could see it being an alternative place for rain or something, too.
Right.
So it could be used as a shelter, but if we're asking for a grant for farmer's market and doesn't get utilized for that, I wouldn't feel good about that.
Well, I'm not sure the grant is for farmer's market. I think you're just using that as an example, correct?
Well, and I think it's intended specifically to provide additional access or access to fresh foods through a farmer's market. Now, I frankly think it can be used for other events as well when you don't have a farmer's market meeting there. I can't say specifically it is permitted or denied at this point of the application.
Yeah, I'll say to my fellow commissioners once again, I appreciate City Manager Scott looking at this, but I think I'd feel more comfortable if we had input from the local farmer's market people about the utilization in that...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, in that park.
What's your timeline on this?
I think we've got to wrap it up mid-week here on this to get the application in. It's imminent. And I will say, possibly, you know, we sort of at staff level address the question of where can we have an effective farmer's market structure? You know, we talked about the possibility of a third street lot or someplace downtown. Jackson Park came to mind because there's a lot of space out there. We had a pavilion before. We have the same sort of questions, Commissioner, that you're raising. Perhaps if we get the grant, we will have flexibility of location. It wouldn't necessarily have to be restricted to Jackson Park. But it's thirty or thirty-five thousand dollars for the construction of a facility somewhere. And so it's possible that we could have that conversation and still meet the needs of the farmer's market.
In the interest of time on this, I'm gonna go outside the norm, and I'm gonna ask Jennifer Kirchner to give some input on this, if you care to.
I have no knowledge, I have no knowledge of this grant. This is the first time I hear about it. But as far as I know, the farmers have no intention of not being at the park, but I haven't asked them directly. I know from their perspective, having the visibility on Main Street is a huge, and also using the historic venue, the Constitution Square, two main selling points. So we're, I'm on the fiscal court agenda tomorrow to move the contract along, so that's proceeding, but I don't know anything about this one.
Okay.
Yeah, and the grant specifically does not, is not an effort to relocate, or it's, the goal of the program is to increase accessibility to opportunities to purchase, not designed to relocate a farmer's market or the dollar amount that it's seeking. One of the reasons why Jackson Park seemed like a good fit was that it was not a significant structure that it could afford, right? It was more on the scale tied to that area of town. So it would be an expansion of the services, create another opportunity or another location for additional distribution.
I would argue that I'm not sure we have the demand for that. I mean, I think if you're at Jackson Park, you could still make it downtown. That was the central location within the food desert of downtown Danville, that was most centrally located.
Are all the farmer's markets in agreement to go into Constitution Square?
Yes. It's one group of farmers that bends from the corner of Fourth and Main. They have no, they split long ago, they have no desire to rejoin, or it is what it is. So I don't, I can't speak for them. I don't have any contact with them. But yes, they're all in agreement to go to Constitution Square.
There's also a stated goal in the grant, and I'm trying to just find some, or to moderate the discussion a little bit. But it says that grantees will be encouraged to start new markets or expand existing markets towards accepting SNAP or WIC benefits at market locations?
They do that all the time.
Do they? Okay. Well, I was gonna say, do they have the equipment and...
Yep, everything.
Okay. Well, never mind.
Yes. And they get specific funding through the state for these, and all the program training , how they administer it. Seems to me like maybe it would be a partnership. I don't know, not either-or. We don't have multiple farmer's markets, so I don't know why we'd create food.
Yeah, it's unfortunate the timeline is so short because I think more input would have been a good on this one. You know, I'm on the Trails Alliance, and I think one thing that we decided there is not to apply for grants that we can't fulfill or fulfill to its fullest. And so I kind of hate to do something and it just becomes not used as a farmer's market. It'd be great for the community, but it may hurt our grant opportunities down the road.
You could apply for it and see if the opportunity comes up and maybe approach the farmers. I mean, and see if they would want to move. I don't know, we're working hard to get into Constitution Square, though.
And you're talking about eight AM to maybe noon. The rest of the time, that pavilion could get a lot of use.
If I remember correctly, besides the farmer's market use, one of the eligibility requirements that you could consider the summer feeding program be a location at that site as well.
Constitution Square is...
Yeah, I know, but there's several of them around town. I'm not advocating for it. I guess I understand. I tried to think about what I read over the weekend, and that was one of the things that that would be a good location for a summer feeding program.
Looks to me like a good way to get a pavilion without taxpayer dollars involved, at least our taxpayer dollars.
Got to make sure we use it appropriately, though.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Any further discussion?
We have a motion and a second?
We do have a motion and a second.
I think we do.
Do we?
Yes.
I'd like to call for the question, then.
Question's been called. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 At least we have to try and see what happens.
opposed, motion carries. Resolution, item ten is Resolution 2019-02-25-03. This is with respect to parks and recreation. Again, Mr. Scott, floor's yours.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Before specifically addressing this resolution, I would like to acknowledge and welcome our fiscal court magistrates who are here tonight. I think we have three in the audience, and I appreciate their interest as well as the interest of the City Commission and the citizens on this issue of developing an effective program for parks and recreation. By way of just a short explanation, the county judge, Howard Hunt, and I did have several conversations about how we might most effectively deal with two issues. And he related this in our joint city-county meeting we had a short time ago. He inherited it and has two large challenges, one to deal with that need to improve overcrowding at the existing jail facility, and the Rynne-Stedter-Carroll study notes that's a twenty-to-forty-million-dollar price tag effectively. And so he, and I compliment him, and the magistrates that we talked to on a couple of occasions about being open-minded about any creative solution that would reduce that cost. And in response to his inquiry, in terms of is it possible to do that, in terms of freeing up any space at the current jail, we said, well, yes, we could do the land exchange that we talked about, and that would generate a cost savings of a million and a half or more in terms of avoiding a construction of a public works facility. He toured our existing facility of the meter shop and thought that would be a good idea, but that's just the prelude to the committee's consideration, and there are a lot of factors to consider in any of that. And certainly, the relative value of the two land areas was one of those that the committee focused on. But I think somewhere in the discussion, the goal of trying to save a rather significant amount of money in cost avoidance might have had less conversation. But accepting the outcome for what it is, I'm not really going to repeat that we recommend that particular solution. But I do have a proposal to recommend to the City Commission for your consideration and adoption tonight, because parks and recreation is key to the health and well-being of all our citizens countywide. We don't differentiate between those of the city and the county in terms of use of those on a fee basis. And we have a study that basically says, and the city spent fifty thousand dollars for the study, and the county, of course, did not join in funding that study, but we're giving them the opportunity to benefit from the recommendations made therein. And so I have considered the comments of the committee and the City Commission and the judge, and I have an offer that I'd like to suggest to you for consideration, amendment if you feel necessary, and adoption if you feel desired. And I'll spend a little detail in this because it is important, and it's important in a number of reasons that we move forward. I noticed the grass is getting green out there, the temps are in the sixties or seventies today, and we need to, in my opinion, proceed pretty quickly with trying to resolve this issue if we're going to have an effective parks and recreation offering this spring and summer, because the clock is literally ticking. So here is the offer for the benefit of the citizens and those in attendance tonight. I'll spend a little time detailing. The first offer, Section One, "In order to increase efficiency, accountability, and responsiveness, parks and recreation shall be operated by and administered as a department of the city, which will assist in the fostering of partnerships with other community members that cannot be effectively utilized under the present structure." That's a biggie in itself. "The administration of that department shall necessarily include responsibility for the oversight of all departmental personnel and administration of the budget as adopted as any other department the city administers." Number two, in this proposed offer, "The city and the county shall enter into a service agreement similar to the 911 service agreement, and the manner also in which solid waste management is coordinated here in Danville County in order to properly outline the roles and obligations of both parties." So we have a written agreement. We don't have that now. Said agreement shall define the annual financial contribution of both the city and the county, both in terms of operating and capital cost. It doesn't say what that is. It just says we'll reach agreement, or whatever that may be. Doesn't set a minimum on what that shall be. It's simply that we need to state what it is. "The operation and maintenance of trails shall be part of the agreement," because we've expanded our trails. It's been an issue that we've discussed over the last year, year and a half. Who's going to look after what has been a big issue, so let's put that in there and address it. "The city and the county shall, through its respective professional staff, jointly develop a total annual budget for parks and recreation to be funded by both the city and the county, as may be determined by the two governing bodies essentially, and that both would adopt." Point number three, "By mutual agreement, the city will agree to sell approximately one acre of its recently acquired fairgrounds property to the county for its use as public works facility or other needs, as may be determined by the county. As a condition of that sale, the county will sell White's Park, net of the acreage to be retained for the Veterans Park, which they've expressed the desire to retain. And the exchange price or purchase of those two transactions shall be at the same price we the city paid to purchase the fairgrounds, which is twenty-six thousand per acre. The city will not sell any additional acreage from its recent acquisition of the fairgrounds property to the county, as such property is, in fact, required to be retained for other future and necessary use in the city's plans." Point number four, "Parks and Recreation Director will be hired by the city to be an employee thereof, as will all other employees in said department in a manner similar to other city department employees. Parks and Recreation Director shall supervise and direct the Parks and Recreation departmental employees, just as any other department of the city. Parks and Recreation Board shall become an advisory committee to the city and its operation in its operation of the Parks and Recreation Department, so as not to encumber those willing to serve with personnel issues, commercial contracting issue, financial management of really significant tax dollars. It would allow that advisory board to focus on programming recommendations, implementation of the master park plan, and prioritization of capital needs in those, in that park. Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee would consist of members from both the city and the county, to be appointed, as we do other joint boards. City and the county would repeal their existing ordinance creating the joint board..." City and the county would repeal their existing ordinance creating the joint board. And we will develop that service agreement to be finalized by both parties no later than April 15, 2019. And the ordinance repeals would occur for the joint board prior to the end of this fiscal year, June 30, 2019. So that is as sort of simple and plain vanilla an offer to let's get together and administer the Parks and Recreation program for all citizens of Danville County without getting into rate differentials in terms of access to the parks. And that's the proposal. Now, this is not about control. This is about accountability and management of the program. And because it's not about control, I'm also suggesting that the city commission permit the county or encourage the county, if they have a counter offer, to make it. But that counter offer should be consistent with the basic provisions of the Parks and Recreation master plan that we just got. And those are, one, it shall be operated, Parks and Recreation shall be administered and operated by one city or the county. And if the county doesn't wish the city to do it, then we'll let you do it, essentially. And if you do it, the director of Parks and Recreation would report to the county, chief administrative officer. Funding would be continued by both the city and the county, as we would determine. Joint advisory board be committed jointly. Service agreement be done and we repeal the ordinance or any other reasonable provisions that the county might wish to make consistent with the master park plan. So this hopefully will take away the viewpoint that the city is trying to control Parks and Recreation. We're trying to control a delivery of service. But control is ultimately vested in how much funds and budget resources are put into capital and operating budgets. And those would be developed jointly by the city and the county. So that is it. I hope we can come to some agreement fairly quickly on this because we do need to proceed with hiring an executive director for the department. We have received resumes. Those have been closed to new applicants. We've got 22 applicants and the Parks and Recreation Board is looking at those as is the city at the present time. And I think we're waiting to see what the city and the county may do on this issue before proceeding with any effort to interview or make a determination on that.
So Robert's rules of order say we need a motion before we get into a discussion.
I move to accept resolution number 2018-02, I'm sorry, back up, 2019-02-25-03.
We have a motion and a second. We are in discussion.
I'd like to follow up real quickly and appreciate you acknowledging our fellow magistrates across the street being here. But we also have members of the Parks and Rec folks here. We appreciate you folks being here. We've had a couple, and I'll use your term, Ron, some robust discussions with our special group. And we've been back and forth a little bit. And I'm sure Kevin has something to say. But I think that we're trying to get down to an amenable agreement. And part of this agreement, as Mr. Scott has noted, is that the counter offer's open. This resolution is just something that we want to send over to the county, the magistrates, fiscal court to take a look at. And in that would be the question, have they already received this document so they have time because their meeting's tomorrow?
No, because it's subject to your approval and/or amendment and approval or decision to do so.
So if it were approved, it would be quickly distributed?
Just as a point of order, upon your adoption, it would be forwarded immediately this evening to the judge. And then it would be dispersed to the court at that time. We put in the resolution that we would request a response to the city's offer or presentation of a counter offer by March 6. And that is next Wednesday so as to allow a special meeting on behalf of the county if necessary, if they're not able to gain consensus or some type of affirmative acceptance of the city's offer or provision of a counter offer by that time. March 6 is an important date because it will allow the city to keep the ball rolling at its next meeting scheduled March the following Monday. The date escapes me. But so either an acceptance or a counter offer by close of business next Wednesday will allow the city to prepare some type of response the following Monday. So as a point of order, again, the way political bodies and public agencies communicate to one another is through resolution. So this body has yet to act upon a formal proposal. So this is not the Ten Commandments written in stone. It is but a malleable document that will be sent to the county for consideration. And it will either invite acceptance or counter offer, at which time the city can act appropriately on whatever action the court formally takes as a court, as opposed to the individual preference of the judge or one or two magistrates, for that matter.
For point of information and for clarification, there've been a lot of things written in social media, a lot of things written in our local newspaper, and a lot of things discussed in all other kinds of settings. So for point of information, this new document that's been presented to us this evening with the city manager and our city attorney, I'd like to walk us through those things that quote-unquote have been discussed that are not included in this document.
Well, there's quite a bit that's been discussed. But I'll give you a brief synopsis of what is missing from the document.
Yes.
Originally, there were conversations or requests for certain properties to perhaps be swapped, is the language that's been used. And this document, it seemed like those discussions seemed to digress the conversation in a way that was not palatable to either side and also made the attention from the real issue at hand be lost somewhere. When you discuss the value of Millennium Park or the value of the city's property on Redrider Lane, it has no bearing whatsoever on the effective delivery of Parks and Recreation's programming and services. So what the attempt in this document presented by the city manager is to strip away those controversial, and I'm putting those in quotes, because they were requests that were made by other parties.
Yes.
But it takes those out of it and simply tries to focus on how Parks and Recreation programming services can be most effectively delivered to the citizens of the entire county while increasing management and accountability and financial oversight. So those are the prevailing values by stripping away the land deals. However, we do acknowledge that from our last meeting that the magistrates present expressed a continued desire for some property at the Fairgrounds site, which spurred further conversations with the judge. And that's why in the offer before you tonight, there is a concession of an acre that the party's deemed sufficient to a probable or potential use by the county and that the city is agreeable to. And if it can alleviate a concern or problem on behalf of the court, then the city was willing to make that offer to help the deal transpire. The city would also be willing to strip all real estate from the transaction whatsoever. So that could be part of a county offer if it's not acceptable to the magistrates.
I'd like to ask Earl...
Oh, he's not finished though.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're not finished for the things that have been...
Well, the only other point that I'll mention is there was significant conversation about the amount of the contribution of either party to Parks and Recreation, the annual budget, and that no two commissioners or no two magistrates possess either the ability or legal standing to come to agreement on. So that is not in this agreement. And I would say a more rational and logical proposal would simply allow the staff of the county and the city to develop that annual budget to be accepted by each public agency on an annual basis. And so that was the attempt to back up and say, let's agree to as much as we possibly can and then let the professional staff of both public agencies iron out the details.
Earl...
Oh, no, wait, he's still not finished. White's Park is in this proposal or is not in this proposal?
White's Park is actually in this proposal. And it was, like I said, that part could be taken out if the county does not want the acre at the fairgrounds. However, if the county consistently, I guess, advocates for some acreage there, in return, the city would advocate its position to, or its desire, to purchase White's Park.
Okay, then the other...
Absent the Veterans Memorial Park, which would be retained by the county.
Yes, yeah. And the other item I want you to address is the Parks and Rec committee structure and functions.
That would be something actually that their chairman advocated for at our committee meeting. And we think is more in line with the committee structure of the city. What it will allow is the committee members that serve to really get back into probably the reason they agreed to serve anyway. And that is programming, make programming decisions, recommendations, help prioritize the master plan and prioritize capital needs as opposed to being a human resources department, a financial management department, and, you know, things that citizens, one, aren't equipped to do in the landscape that we have today in human relations and governmental contracting, which are quite significant issues. And it will allow them to simply operate back in their wheelhouse, I will say. And that is being able to gauge the temperature of the public for programming and service needs.
And then I guess the last thing on my mind is that this proposal does away with both ad hoc committees.
Yeah, the old ad hoc committee has sunsetted.
Yes.
So, and we agreed at the last ad hoc committee that the committee was not able to reach a consensus on a recommendation. And by virtue of that lack of consensus, the one consensus was that the work of the committee was over. And so at that time, it was determined that it would be best for the public agencies to speak to one another in this format, which would be by a resolution or proclamation to one another till we can gauge the temperature of the full court and the full board of commissioners.
And I hope that covers all the perceived rumors that are out in our community. Takes away the divisiveness, the appearance of a split between the city and county who have just recently restarted dialogue and discussions about lots of joint adventures. Thank you, Mr. Dexter.
You're welcome.
I certainly want to hear from my fellow commissioner to my right. But I want to make a comment and good segue. Attorney Dexter was giving us some update on things that happened. And one of the things you just commented on is totally true. We want the county and city to come together on a budget for Parks and Rec. But the one thing that you didn't mention that I know is in there, so I'm going to help it along, is it's based on the recommendations of this Parks and Rec Board. I think that that's what we want them to be tasked to do is tell us what the priorities or the imminent needs are. And then we have to decide if we have the finances to do that, as does the county.
Absolutely, and I apologize for not articulating that properly. That goes without saying, in my opinion, just as the cemetery committee recommends expenditures in the cemetery or beautification prioritizes needed, the streetscape plan, things of that nature. The city, all city departments lean upon the recommendations made by the committees that service them in budget preparation. But thank you for clarifying that because I didn't intend to leave that out.
Earl, talk to us about this one acre. How'd you arrive at that? How does that benefit the county?
That's purely a space diagram. That site's not master planned. But we feel like that looking at some of the facilities that the Parks and Rec master planning document said were lacking or advised upon, felt like that, given all the demands that we're aware of that property, you could probably end up with an acre, maybe more. I think that's subject to final detailing and final layout and final agreement, quite honestly. I think that it's very premature to speculate that there's, you know, five acres left over or two acres left over. But we feel good that there's some acreage there, at least an acre, that you could work with and try to create to the benefit of the county at that location. The biggest problem, if you would couch it that way with that site, is it's just not as big as what folks perceive it as, right? The parcel on the north side's only nine acres. And White's Park's five acres. And, you know, and when you start adding those things up, you know, 15 acres for, you know, one of the proposed uses out of the Parks and Rec master plan was an aquatic center. You know, that's 15 acres. And so it starts to not, you know, it's not a luxurious, you know, 75-acre tract, right? It's much smaller and confined than what folks' perception is when they hear the fairgrounds that, you know, you unconsciously think it's much bigger than it is. So my suggestion is only that we go through a professional process of programming, correctly align the space so that we know that it functions and works, and then detail what could be disposed of if that was something that was still to be considered.
Sure. And Earl, remind the commissioner, the total acreage in the city's acquisition, wasn't about 26 acres total, 25 acres or something?
Nine plus 14, I think, is what it...
Twenty-three.
Yeah.
Is that one acre adjacent to property the county owns now?
Well, and without his presence and without his comment, you know, one of the things we've done today is met with the county engineer. You know, we've brainstormed on the property itself. And, you know, there's existing barns on the structure that maybe they could be, you wouldn't want to, if there's a beneficial structure there, you know, you wouldn't want to necessarily discard that, right? And so all of that needs to be considered. You have roadway access that has to be considered. So rather than, I would suggest if you're going to talk about it and aligning property with each other makes sense. So right now, White's Park splits two parcels. So if you could eliminate that conflict and consolidate property, you know, there's things you could do to improve the site and improve the layout. But I just honestly, it's just very premature to say, well, we've got this laid out perfectly because that's really not what you were trying to do. You were trying to go through a thoughtful process. And the first step is just acquire the property and then decide through a longer process what you want to put on it. I know I'm rambling a little bit, but that's really where you're at in the process.
I like what you've drawn here. It's clean, it's understandable. And the spirit of it is the way the whole thing started. It's a 50-50 relationship. I have said for quite some time now, it matters not to me. Who manages it? Choose. And as far as I'm concerned, like I said, I'll just leave it there. It matters not to me. What matters to me is that we're getting our money's worth out of this significant investment.
Kevin, Mr. Combs?
What's that?
I thought you had some comments you wanted to make.
Well, I was gonna, you know, Rick and I were in the same committee meeting. And given the new master plan, you know, that's why we're here to this point. And it seems to me that this is a good place to start. Maybe it's a good place to end. I don't know, it depends on how the... I don't know, it depends on how the, our folks at the county view it, but, you know, this is what we were trying to get started the other day, maybe got off on the wrong foot, but, so I think this is, you know, something good to come back, something tangible. We can say, you know, here's our plan. Do you like it, not like it? Amend it, do what you want. And...
Or put forth a different proposal.
A different proposal. I just don't see any, there's no reason to go forward in a spirit of confrontation. You know, we're doing it for the best Parks and Rec department we can have, for adults, children, and whoever, so let's do it together.
Any further discussion? Yes, sir.
I think it'd be, it's important for me to say that I'm not willing to go back and rehash all the water that's already gone over the Cumberland Falls this last week here. There's been a lot of water that's gone over the falls in this discussion, these debates, and been on the commission for the last three or four years, a lot of things I've read about the last week or so, we've just have never discussed them as a commission. So while someone feels like they got this done to them or that done to them, where I sit as a commissioner, a lot of the things that are out there that are quote-unquote rumors, I've never discussed as a commissioner. So to me, they've never been brought forward to this body to be discussed, so no promises were ever made. And that's why I wanted to get our city attorney to clear up some of this stuff, because I think going forward, this is our offer, and I think it's a good one, and I think it moves us forward, because it puts the ownership back in the entire fiscal court and back in the entire city commission to make a decision.
And thank you for saying that, Commissioner. It reminds me that, as again, a point of order, that resolutions are the manner in which public agencies communicate with one another.
Yes.
So most effective communication, right, is a direct line of communication. The only direct line of communication that this body can be afforded in this type of form of government is resolution and the adoption thereof. So I encourage you, in the spirit of the negotiations that have transpired to this point, you've had a full conversation on them, and I would encourage you to either vote and to approve this resolution or some version thereof tonight, so it can be passed to the county, and the county can speak as a court. I think it's important that we speak now as bodies, not as individuals, not as individual commissioners or magistrates. The collective decision of the five of you and the entire court is what matters. And decorum can be raised to the highest level upon that type of activity, and so I would encourage you to go ahead and vote on the matter or any amendments thereto, and then allow it to be forwarded to the court for the court's full response.
Well, we've had a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, and we've had significant comment. And Mr. Ellis, I know you're standing, but you'll have your opportunity here shortly, okay? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I'm pleased with what we're attempting to do. I did not come to the meeting tonight with a thought of moving this forward, but after this discussion, I'm willing to do that. I am also want to go on record as saying that, I know it's getting to be springtime, and I got invited to baseball tournament this weekend for seven to eight-year-olds. So I know that the folks out there are getting real antsy and getting busy, so I understand that. But what I'm trying to say is that I'm not necessarily tied into the March, whatever it is, March the 5th deadline. If the county comes back and says, hey, we're really looking at this, we're studying this real seriously, I need a little bit more time, I'm open to that. I'm not going to recommend a date, but I'm just kind of open to that, okay?
Yeah, I think like Mr. Dexter said, none of it's carved in stone or...
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've got a resolution here, and if we vote it as is, that March 6th date is in there.
But that would allow for, I mean, if they needed a date change, the counteroffer would, could be, we need until such-and-such timeframe. I think the city's concern, from a staff point of view, is that dialogue be continued in a systematic fashion. We're in this, we are entering the budget preparation season, and it's important that this matter be resolved in this fiscal year so as to allow for appropriate planning. Without proper planning, there won't be significant delivery of services next fiscal year. So it's incumbent upon the bodies to decide how the matter will proceed.
Any further comments? Seeing none, chair call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries.
I'd like to make one comment after this, which I think is more appropriate. Now, I want to compliment publicly the Parks and Rec staff for keeping things rolling at a high degree, and nice job, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, and we all second that, too, yes.
We are now in the section called "Hear the Public." This is the public's opportunity to discuss anything that is not on tonight's agenda.
City manager's report?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Does he have one?
Yeah, I've already marked through that. Let's back up one.
It's very brief.
Have you said enough tonight? Go ahead, sir.
Very brief. I just wanted to share with commissioners that I did receive an invitation recently from Roger Fox, the director of Shepherd's House, inviting the staff and the commission to come down and see the good work that they're doing there. And we're talking about a Thursday afternoon visit of this week. If anyone is interested and available to go, please let me know, and I'll confirm the number that we'll be going down there.
And you have a copy of that invitation right here. It's like that.
We just got it.
Yeah. Anything else now, Hear the Public? Public's opportunity, take three minutes, and three minutes only.
Or less.
Or less, certainly, to discuss whatever you want to discuss.
I know Parks and Rec is a complicated discussion, but my only interjection would be that the people who lose most as we continue are the kids. And there's a lot of kids, you don't even have to be very well off, and you can afford, if, you know, there's not a need that's being met here, we can go to Garrett, we can go to Lincoln, you can join another league. The kids who are in the most need are the ones who are going to lose the longer we take and argue over property and control or not control or however we want to talk about it. So I would just have to interject a little bit of something on the side of our kids and our community that really hope that you guys work this out to the best of your ability.
Thank you, ma'am.
I second that one, too.
Anybody else? Mr. Ellis.
For the record, I am Tom Ellis, a citizen here for over 17 years, and I am a newly-elected magistrate. And I am also one of the two who sat with the gentleman in front of me on the two sessions that we've had. Mark Twain once said that the report of his demise in the newspaper was greatly exaggerated. Likewise, Mr. Atkins, I heard rumors as well, that our committee duly voted into power had been disbanded. I'm not an attorney, but I would conjecture, and I would even think that under parliamentary rule before your action, it would have been appropriate for this board and for fiscal court to officially disband our working group, since it was indeed formally impounded. And I think there could be protocols that could be explored on that. I won't take three minutes tonight, but the judge may have to pull the lever under my chair tomorrow, because there have been several things that we were not fully informed about in this very, very brief process. The one I would stress the most is, we heard no less than a half a dozen times, and we heard it from legal counsel, the only legal counsel in the room, which was rather surprising as well, because I'm not sure that that fit within the agreed-upon order by the two bodies, that in fact, not only was the attorney in the room, but he presided to a great, a very substantial degree, on behalf of the two gentlemen from city council. But the one point that I would make the most is, we were very much led to believe that it was an imperative that we go to the single unit of government, because it was impossible to have a director when you had two heads of state. Ladies and gentlemen, under the legal contract that exists now, they can move ahead tomorrow, and there is no legal impediment to them, to the Parks and Recreation Board hiring their director. So we were very, very much misinformed on a critical issue that could have been handled six weeks ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, move right along into the commissioner's comments. Who wants to begin? Well, I'll begin, if you don't mind. In yesterday's Danville paper, was a wonderful section, and it had a very nice article on Chief Gray in there. I want to find out when his next series of games are. I think we all ought to show up and hassle him and carry on, throw things, and maybe we'll get thrown out.
It's the Kentucky-Tennessee game, right? He needs to get us tickets, right?
Oh, he's not refereeing that.
No, I'm just joking, though.
Okay, okay. Anyways, nice article. If you haven't read it, it's worth your time. Anybody else?
I already expressed one of my notes to the Parks and Rec staff and gave them that congratulations for keeping things rolling and doing a good job. So the only other thing I had is, I don't know who's responsible for cleaning up Smith's Park, but it really looks good if you haven't been down there lately, and it could be Creek, could be our city staff, since that's our park now. And, or it could be the beautification, but anyway, kudos to whoever done that. It really looks nice.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Well, Mr. Hunt left. Last meeting, had a little debate about Black History Month, and I talked about the loss of my dear friend Frank Robinson. But I was chest-tight for that, because I forgot to mention that January the 13th, 1919, '42 was born, and we celebrated his 100th birthday, January 13th, 2019. So tell Mr. Hunt I said something about '42. All right, who's '42? Come on, folks. Clay, who's '42?
I'm only 35, Mr. Atkins.
Yeah, and I'm 39 only, right? Okay. Jackie Robinson's birthday.
Nothing else? Moving right along.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not a commissioner, so I should wait till you're finished. But I do want, I think it's incumbent on me to make one quick response to Mr. Ellis's statement, since he feels compelled to question my integrity in the process of, in the role in the ad hoc committee. I was asked to attend that meeting, as was the county attorney. Had a conversation with the county attorney prior to my attendance, for which he himself was not able to attend, but said he didn't mind and to proceed. So I wanted to clarify that point, and I also should clarify that by virtue of this committee, or this board of commissioners passing the resolution tonight, the ad hoc committee has been disbanded. So no, no two commissioners can disband any ad hoc committee, that goes without saying. However, by virtue of your passage of your resolution tonight, that is the correct order of events that terminates the actions of that committee. To have a joint committee, you have to have the willingness of both parties. By presentation of this offer, you've said the work of the committee is done, and you've spoken as a body. So I think it's important for me to clarify those two issues, both for my professional responsibility and ethical standards that I adhere to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll move into item 12, that is, the payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion to approve the bills as presented?
So moved?
Second?
Motion made and seconded. You want to state the amount, Mr. Atkins?
Excuse me. $127,000, $127,045.93. I got everybody's ears, isn't it?
Yeah. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Item 13 is Resolution 2019-02-25-04. This is in regards to some surplus 911 equipment. Donna, anything you want to add?
No, it's just surplusing the equipment from the 911 center.
Okay. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
Sure. Go ahead. I move to accept Resolution Number 2019-02-25-04.
Thank you, sir. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second and a third. Discussion?
Well, I might want to comment, or you can, Donna. Certainly, we want to sell stuff that's surplus, but there's quite a bit here, so I think...
We started the E or the Gov. deals, and it's out there for people. So this, we put on Gov. deals also.
Yeah.
And they're separate, they'll be able to view those on there. You can set up accounts and actually bid, like eBay, or people can go out there and set up accounts.
She has a yard sale, man.
That's right.
My point was really that we stand to gather some pretty good income here, because it's a big list.
I wanted to mention that all the computers, the hard drives have been destroyed out of them as they have to be. So the computers are hard driveless, and they will be, put that away on the Gov. deals. I don't know.
My question's about the HP Elite Desk, that there's four of those. I'm looking for a stand-up desk, is that all?
It's not a stand-up desk.
Not such, no such look, right? Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Any further discussion?
Everything we have to sell is stand-up.
Yeah, you can stand up. Whoa. You need to ride Moon today.
If there's no further comments, I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 14 is Resolution 2019-02-25-05. This is in regard to the KU Plant the Planet Grant application. Ms. Hamner, proceed.
As a member of that Plant the Planet Committee, I'm here to represent and ask you to accept and sign the KU Plant the Planet Grant for the planting of trees in, within the Danville city limits. We have a good history. This will be our sixth year, I believe, planting a total of about 400, 350, 400 trees.
And this grant is for $4,000, correct?
I believe it's five.
Five?
It's five. KU matches it, and the match is paid for with private dollars, which have already been raised.
Yes.
Good.
And the city plants the trees as their part of the bargain.
Okay. Any questions?
Just a clarification. I believe the grant was for 4,000 this year. It's been 5,000 in the past, but I believe the dollar amount is 4,000 this year.
Correct.
And the city's, or the Citizen Fund is going to transfer $6,000 for a total of $10,000 worth of tree plants.
Oh, okay, that's where. I thought, you got me confused.
Yeah, a total of 10, but six from the Danville Friends of Trees.
I'm the one that orders the trees, and I already have my list made.
Yeah. You're good for 10,000.
Do you already have them planted in your mind?
I thought Cottage Interiors just made a generous donation.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Cottles, or second?
Second.
Mr. Atkins, discussion?
I have a serious question.
Okay.
Do you, does it designate where you have to plant these trees, in the city limits anyplace?
Well, the original, you know, Mr. Weston, Mr. Bo Weston started this. His original thing was, he wanted everywhere, he walked in his sandals, he wanted there to be shade, and so he wanted to shade sidewalks.
Okay.
And so we tried to put them along the sidewalk, where they're not under a wire, you know, overhead wire. you know, overhead wire, and there is room for them to grow. And we have expanded now. We planted 81 trees on the 2168 bypass and environs of the intersection out there where you turn to go to Lexington this last fall. And they're not sidewalks everywhere there, but there are trails. So we have expanded it to, along sidewalks and trails.
Good. Answered the question exactly how I wanted to hear it. There, there, well, there's some, you know, we have old Jackson Park, and we have new trails that don't have shade, so I wanted to know for limited to where we had to plant these trees, and so...
Where people walk.
So there's no other discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed, motion carries. Item 16 is the, I'm sorry, 15, Resolution 2019-02-25-06. This is a beautification contract. Mr. Coffey?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. The city advertised and received bids for the beautification contract, the floral program. The low bidder was from Divine Creations, our existing contractor. The low bid was $68,885, and I would question, is there a typo on the bottom of that resolution, Steve? Or you got 48 at the bottom and 68, and I was under the impression it was 68, just to make sure.
Then that must be a typo on my part. I apologize.
Yep, thank you.
So the amount is?
$68,885.
Thank you.
And that, that'll be corrected. We'll make an amendment to our...
If you make your friendly amendment, I'll make sure the final one that's signed has that correction. It's a clear typo. It's corrected the heading, it's just incorrect at the bottom.
Do I hear friendly amendment?
I move to make a friendly amendment from the 48,885 to 68,885.
Do you have a second on that?
I'll make a slightly irritated second.
Further discussion?
Yeah, another question. I'm glad you caught that and corrected that. In their bid, there was also some stuff for Constitution Square. Is that going to be handled by the county? And we're just getting good pricing for them, or?
No, that's not pricing for them necessarily. We put that, we talked about that with the county engineer a little bit, and we included that as an alternative for him, really. If he wanted to pay the city to do that work rather than him have to administer it, then that was his unit price to do the work that was identified in our contract. And so we move forward with ours, and certainly if he wants to add it at a later time, that's his choice, and we've made him aware of that.
Okay. I appreciate that, because once again, and the county's done this for us on paving of Millennium Park as well, if they can get a better bid than we can, then let's talk about it. And so I wanted to find out if that's what you were doing.
Yep. Yeah, Duane was where we did that.
Okay, we have a motion and a friendly amendment to that. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion and friendly amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed, motion carries. Item 16 is in regard to the Second Street Bridge update.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. I'll go through that real quick for John. We have completed the engineering review of all the documents provided by the contractor. The contractor's made order of certain precast items and has given the city the schedule that they would anticipate beginning, really, the next couple of weeks, they'll begin mobilizing and start work on the smaller pedestrian bridge. As you'll recall, we had that as a, you have the main traffic bridge, and then there was an adjoining pedestrian bridge a few feet from it. They'll start off the road. We would anticipate them actually begin demolition on Second Street Bridge the first or second week of April. We will send out the appropriate notice in form of press release beforehand. We'll begin, now that we know the fixed schedule, working with the schools and emergency services to make sure everyone's aware before the street's finally closed. It will be a problem, but hopefully that it will be done before the summer travel season hits, and so that it's, the obstacles mitigated at least, or the delays and reconfiguration of traffic movement is minimized.
What's the start to finish, or if everything goes okay?
They can get done within 60 days after they mobilize. So we would, well, 60 days after the street closure is what we would expect. So if they start the first week of March, by the end of May, they, if all goes well, they should be gone. And some of the clearings, Public Works has done a great job. We've had a beautification contractor down there that has done some of the work, some of the removals. Public Works has done some of the work also, and that has been at the advice of beautification so far. And so we are, we'll continue to make those improvements as summer progresses along the creek, along the park there, and try to reestablish the usability and the aesthetics of the creek access from the park.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment. Again, you reported to us last time, and I really appreciate it that with this bridge rebuild, there will be separated sidewalks, which is part of our master plan for the city, is to make parks like Smith Park accessible to everybody. And so that's helpful, and I appreciate that.
I'm informed that we have a need for an executive session.
Yes, sir, that is correct, dealing with personnel matters.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
I'd like to provide a litigation update as well, if you could...
Add that into the motion.
Thank you.
I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matter pursuant to KRS 618101F, and for litigation, is it pending?
Yes.
Pending litigation for which disclosure of details might compromise litigation posture pursuant to KRS 618101C.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll second it.
That was pretty, and y'all didn't need one second.
That's what I did. You did a good job.
There was a plan to get you involved here, so...
Good job, Rick.
Any discussion? Chair call question? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed. We are adjourned from regular meeting.
I'll move that we return to regular session.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed. Motion carries. We are in regular session.
Staff would ask that you accept the resignation of Robert Miller from the cemetery as presented.
So moved.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed.
Next, we would ask, staff would ask that you approve the transfer of Joyce Collins from the Legislative Department to Engineering as presented.
Fair motion?
No, not going to do it.
Tell her we said no.
A voice from the back. Do I hear a motion?
What are you willing to pay to get her?
I will make that motion if she wants to, wants to leave us.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Second. Is discussion with...
You're going to get a good one.
Best wishes.
You're going to get a good assistant.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, liked, signed, motion carries. Anything else to come before this body?
Can I say something off the record? I just want to commend staff and the commission for the sprout of cooperation that you've shown this first two months of this new tenure of our commission. It's going to be an exciting spring, but I look forward to it, because we're going to stay connected and going to stay civil in the work that we do. So I want to commend you all and thank you all for that.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. That's a good way to end tonight's meeting. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Move we adjourn.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night.